We see you've got some new faces out here today, so welcome again. First item up is announcements. I think we have a North Carolina Association of County Commissioners video update. Let's roll the movie.
Is there anybody else that wants to speak today?
Hello and welcome to the county update video for October 2017. This video is produced by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners each month to keep county officials informed about association activities. On Saturday, August 12th, the NCACC wrapped up its 110th annual conference in Durham County. The event culminated with the swearing-in of the NCACC's 101st President, Durham County Commissioner Brenda Howerton. During the business session of the conference, Ronnie Smith, Martin County Commissioner, was elected to serve as the association's next second vice president. In addition, commissioners voted for Surrey County Commissioner Larry Phillips to serve as president-elect and Yadkin County Commissioner Kevin Austin to serve as first vice president. Furthermore, Davidson County Commissioner Fred McClure became immediate past president. During the conference, several individuals were honored for their support of counties. Fred McClure, NCACC immediate past president and Davidson County Commissioner, received the Outstanding County Commissioner Award. Delala Blanks, former Bladen County Commissioner and NCACC past president; David Thompson, former NCACC executive director; and Danny Wright, former Vance County Commissioner and NCACC past president, were all inducted into the NCACC Hall of Fame. Michael Sprayberry, Director of North Carolina Emergency Management, received the Friends of the Counties Award; and the UNC School of Government received the Distinguished Service Award. Additionally, several counties were recognized by the local government Federal Credit Union and the North Carolina Cooperative Extension Service for establishing innovative practices that improve services for citizens. You can view those award recipients and more information on all NCACC awards by visiting NCACC.org. NCACC President Brenda Howerton introduced her presidential initiative titled "100 Counties: Helping Our Children Thrive." It will focus on how counties can support the growth and development of children. At a related event, the NCACC partnered with the NC School Boards Association and the UNC School of Government's NC Impact Team to discuss pre-kindergarten and early education investments in North Carolina at a recent meeting in Chapel Hill. The program titled "Thinking Big for Small People: Why Are NC County Leaders So Enthusiastic About Pre-K for Four-Year-Olds" was specifically designed for local policymakers curious about pre-k and actively considering pre-k expansion options and creating strategies to reach more children. NCACC President Brenda Howerton and Executive Director Kevin Leonard presented at the event. You can visit the UNC School of Government website for more information. Several steering committees will meet in the coming months. The dates and locations of those meetings will be available soon at NCACC.org/staringcommits. You can also sign up to participate in steering committees on that webpage. NCACC Board of Trustees had their annual retreat in September where they heard detailed reports on the state of the association's principles. The NCACC Board of Directors will meet in Dare County in October as Brenda Howerton will lead her first meeting as president. The NCACC Executive Committee and officials from the League of Municipalities met with Governor Roy Cooper in Raleigh in September to discuss issues important to local governments. There's a wealth of information on our website about other NCACC events and resources, including the County Map Book, progress on county leadership forums on opioid abuse, information on county best practices, and you can read more about any of the topics we've discussed here. Well, that wraps it up for this month. Thank you for watching and allowing us to keep you updated on your association's activities. If we can help you or answer any questions, please feel free to contact us directly using the information on your screen. Thanks again for joining us, and we'll see you next month.
All right. Any further announcements?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to just bring it up for discussion. Possibility of having a joint meeting sometime in November, that'll be next month. And if the board would be willing to entertain that thought, I'll go ahead and begin communicating with the town officials at both the Town of Franklin and the Town of Highlands and get that set up. Again, it'll be a special call meeting that we will set at our November regularly scheduled meeting. So in between that time, if the board so desires, I'll begin communicating with those officials and try to get that set up. It is our turn to host that meeting.
Any objections? Everybody good with that? Okay. I presume, just from prior discussion, that's going to be held at the new community building?
Yes.
The renovated community building. I think it, is it going to be opening, looks like, real soon?
Real soon, yes. Should be getting the paving done sometime this week. Yes, and we will probably work that in with that joint meeting and have a combination there.
That's a good thought.
And also, one more quick thing. If you'll recall, the Southwestern Commission was working kind of parallel to the broadband committee in looking at regional broadband expansion. The first step in that process is a broadband survey they have released to the seven western counties. If you'll look on your screens here, Macon County has included a link to that survey on our website, and I don't know if we can click on that and just kind of show a little bit about what's going to be going on there. Anyway, that survey is going to be an excellent tool, and it's going to assist that regional broadband study. I think it would be good if we could fill that out and just talk about it, promote it, because again, they have an effort that is running parallel to ours, and I think that survey's going to be very useful to them and serve as a tool during that process. So again, just a reminder, we do have a link to that survey on our county website, and we would encourage everyone, every resident of Macon County, if available, to take that survey.
Anything further? We'll all rise. We'll observe a moment of silence and I'll ask, Frichler, the last speaker, the latest in the pledge. Thank you. Public comment period. I don't have anybody signed up. Anybody like to address the board? What kind of time you got? Chris? Anybody else? Nope. Additions to the agenda?
Frichler, Shales, what? I'd like to make it 9B.
Under reports?
Yes. Before it's a presentation, I'd like to update the board on the November 11th Veterans Day.
Okay.
And at the same time, the charters of freedom, we're going to have unveiling of those at that time.
Good time. Okay.
That'll be on Saturday, November 11th. The program will start at 11, but at 10:30, they'll have the parade through town.
Okay. Sounds good. We'll talk a little more about that time.
If the board would please, if you'd consider that 2018 holiday schedule that I emailed to you after the agenda packet went out?
That'll be not. I'll just put that as new business, 11C.
Okay. And also, if you will please, another addition to appointments, consideration of Brett Murphy's reappointment to the EDC. That would be the fourth EDC appointment for the agenda.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
We'll talk about it at that time. That's good. Go ahead there.
If we could add, under new business, item 11D, that will be discussion of wastewater treatment at Anahala School. We have Coach Gibbs here with us tonight. He's going to come and speak to the board about that. The reason this did not get included in your agenda packet is because I think we're recently finding out that the timelines will occur before our next board meeting. And also, I think it was just found out late last week that it would have to, that the county is going to play a role in the grant application process for this project. Coach Gibbs has been working with Mr. John Fay, our Housing Director, and they'll be able to talk to you more about that and fill you in on the details when 11D comes.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, under 9C, a short report on our latest RPO meeting about a road detail. We'll bring the board up to speed on what we want to get, what we didn't get, and what good news, mostly good news, from the DOT.
Anything else? Chester, Lori? Carl? Good? All right. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
It's on the move.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No old business. We'll move on to new business. Actually, reports, presentation, sorry. 9A, Community Advisory Committee Appointment Process. Sarah Jane Melton, the Area Agency on Aging Administrator for the Southwestern Commission. Welcome.
Thank you. We appreciate your time and energy tonight, Sarah Jane Melton. I am, I work for Southwestern Commission. I'm the Area Agency on Aging Director, and I have with me Larry Reeves, who is the Long Term Care Ombudsman. And we are just bringing this information. We met with Derek a week or so ago. This new House Bill 648, excuse me, 248, was vetted and approved by the County Commissioner Association. The reason for the House bill came basically as a directive from the Administration on Community Living that North Carolina was not appointing their volunteers for this specific committee correctly. We were not following the process that was approved by the Administration for Community Living on the federal level, which, if you will, is the federal division of adult services. And so, we're bringing this as information. We're not asking for any appointments tonight for this committee. It is the Community Advisory Committee for Long Term Care Facilities. And you have three long-term care facilities in your county. Two, you have five. Larry will tell you how many you have. And so, it's an information so that when it comes to the point that you need to appoint someone for that committee, you'll understand the new process.
Okay.
Okay?
Good. Thank you.
Good evening. To speak to House Bill 248, it was passed in July by the General Assembly and became a matter of law. And it did change the process of the appointment of community advisory committees. Prior to July, community advisory committees were appointed by the Board of Commissioners, and then they would notify the Long Term Care Ombudsman, in this case, the Regional Ombudsman. That's what I do. Then you would notify the ombudsman that somebody had been appointed, and then it became the responsibility of the Long Term Care Ombudsman to get that person trained and up and going. Well, the process has changed now with the passing of 248. What happens now is if there are vacancies on your community advisory committee for long-term care, and you have a joint committee here in Macon County, which means you cover adult care homes and nursing homes. One committee services both levels of care. What happens now, and what will need to happen in the future, is if there is a vacancy that occurs, someone resigns or someone comes off the committee. The Regional Long Term Care Ombudsman would need to work with the clerk to the board and to notify the board and the county that there is a vacancy that exists on that committee. What will happen in the future is instead of appointing that person right away, you will simply nominate the person that is going to come on the community advisory committee to the Regional Long Term Care Ombudsman. It would become my responsibility at that point in time to do the vetting, to make sure that the person wanted to serve, that they did not have any conflicts of interest, that they understood what the appointment to the committee would be about. And then also, it would be my responsibility to train them and orient them to the job. And once that task is completed, then I would refer to the State Long Term Care Ombudsman saying that the person's ready now to be designated. And this is the key term, to be designated as a member of the community advisory committee. If the State Long Term Care Ombudsman approves that designation, they notify me, then I notify you that the person is ready for appointment. And then you would appoint them initially to a one-year term. And then, if they serve that and things are well, then following that would be three-year terms, as the current system works. There is another difference that comes with House Bill 248, and that is up until this point in time, we have never had a way to remove someone from a committee that wasn't serving effectively or that had a conflict of interest. It used to be with appointment, and it stayed on there until they died. It was a live sentence. I think Doc Crawford's been on there since 1986. I mean, a long time. So, you know, we've got a way now where if someone doesn't serve, if they do not attend the meetings, if there are problems that they create in a facility or in a long-term care community that is a difficult problem that we can't resolve easily. And if they have, you know, that conflict of interest that exists, that they've got a family member in a building, or they're getting money somehow paid, or whatever, and they do not notify the Regional Ombudsman of that conflict of interest, and I happened to find that out, then I notify the State Long Term Care Ombudsman. They de-designate that person. And when a person is de-designated, then I notify you that this person has been de-designated. At that point in time, you have to rescind their appointment. And so, that's all in the law of 248. It's pretty clear, but we wanted to make sure that we explain that to each of our Board of Commissioners and to our county managers. So we've been attempting to do that. Now, I realize that you all have a lot of committees and a lot of agencies and boards that you appoint folks for, but this is a very important one as your Long Term Care Community Advisory Committee. They go into the buildings. They know what's happening in our long-term care community in all five facilities here in Macon County. They know what's going on because we're in there visiting. And then they also know what's going on in the bigger world of long-term care because we get continuous education about that. So they're very knowledgeable about the whole long-term care world, if you will. So that's basically why we're here tonight, to tell you all about that. Told you more than you wanted to know. And if there's any way that, you know, that I can help, if there's any questions that come up, please do not hesitate to let us know.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
The only thing we can say, like, we discussed this at the association was that for rural counties, when it goes to Raleigh, you know, to get people to service hard enough to get people to serve this committee now. And then when it goes to Raleigh, you know, who knows? I mean, so they gotta be vetted here, they gotta be vetted in Raleigh, and then come back and you get people to serve the way it is. And if you, if you're close to thinking specifies, you know, how long that process is, and we don't know exactly where it comes from. We gotta get out of here.
It is what it is.
It is what it is.
And we'll make it work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Frichler, Shales, update on Veterans Day, November 11th. Charters, and the charters of freedom unveiling.
November 11th on a Saturday, and it's gazebo here. We'll have our Veterans Day program. We'll have a parade that starts at 10:30. Then we'll have a, we're going to do it a little bit different this year, 11 o'clock. We're going to have a, instead of having speakers, we're going to have a musical Veterans Day. Then after we have that program, we're going to transition over to the, across the street beside the courthouse, and we're going to have the unveiling of the charters of freedom, which is the Declaration of Independence, Constitution, Bill of Rights. And if it hadn't been for the veterans, we wouldn't have that. And so, we felt like it was good to bring this together that day. And Mr. Rowland has been a real asset in communication with Mr. Schneider, and it's going to happen on that day, and we're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
10:30, you said, the parade was.
And when do you think the dedication will be?
Probably, I want, it'd be close to 12:30. What happens here, when you go through the program, then the VFW takes over laying of the wreath, 21 gun sleeves and taps. Then after taps, we'll transition to their MAC system over there. And I'm sure at that time, you'll have someone from the charters of freedom who will make some comments. Then we'll have Mr. Corbin, Representative Corbin, some other people who will make comments about it. And I think Mr. Tate will probably put on the spot of being a spokesperson for the county. And hope to see y'all later there. We feel like it's going to be a good thing because it's going to be a musical. It's going to involve the Franklin High School Band, the Chorus, the White Sisters, Blue Ridge. So we're going to have a great fellowship that day.
Thank you. Frichler, Bill?
We did meet in Bryson City to get an update, to see how we came out with our request for, right on our DOT projects. The regional impact on US 64, it's Clay County line, that the destructive climbing lanes and turning lanes in select locations. That, of course, some of that's underway now, and the rest of that has been approved. Construction date has not been set. State Road 1372, the Holy Church Road, has been approved. That's the Burnington Road, if you don't know, to modernize that and widen and shoulder that roadway. State Road 1667, the Will Grove Road. That's on Wall Street, keep going toward the school if you don't, to middle grade and MBI. With curb and gutter, have a real drainage problem there around the school. That has been approved and has been scheduled probably for 1920. Not 1920, but now, 2019, 2020. And Harrison Avenue, Rearview Street, we have that surface road. The rest of them are interiors. But we're so proud to announce that, which we've asked for, and that we did, and the DOT did agree, to really move up the building Circle Bridge. Little one-lane bridge behind the New Engels. It's on tap very early in 2018. So I don't know how about the improvements to that road. You know, as locals, we think that that sort of is going to be well-used coming out of that New Engels, coming back that way. So that did get moved up. That was one of the top requests that we had made. And so, and we asked that whole interchange area, which should come back toward, because we think they will come through there, come by the entrance to Kmart and get back on the four lane. And the county managers, they seem to agree with that scenario and have agreed to look at that. And another road we put on a top priority and made our points list was, of course, Buck Creek Road. Buck Creek Road, as we know, has become, as the construction has picked back up, is now, for those of us who traveled it, a lot of us sitting up here have traveled it a lot. More and more, the big trucks are using Buck Creek, even though they just have paging to authorize, so you can turn off at 6:40 at Coal Mountain. And that did move up, and that moved up to number one as far as our priorities because of, not only the number of cars, they've done the traffic count, not us, but the trucks that are now using Buck Creek Road, Mr. Chairman, as you well know it, and the volume. And I think what sealed the deal was during the two-storm, both those accesses were cut off, as was Scaly Mountain access. They was really, other than going down to the ceiling, back up 107, they were nothing. So that prioritized that road. So all in all, this is the best in our prioritization that we had since this wonderful point system come out that we have done, and we hope we can see the fruition. 441, if you will, from where you turn at the red light before you get to McDonald's, down to the fire grounds and a little patch beyond, that is, and of course, that got moved up on schedule. That is still scheduled for 2018. And so, we're glad to see that. As we all know, that's a very dangerous, dangerous road. So that was moved up last year from 2022, Mr. Manager. So all in all, we think we did okay. We did, after the resurfacing of 441, if you drive that road by the bit, you see why it needs it. So with all those things combined, we think we did okay. Mr. Birch will now be our Division Engineer after December. Mr. Green is retired. Mr. Birch is acting Division Engineer, and was announced that he would become the Division Engineer after the December meeting. So we have a good relationship with him as this board, Ben McCamby. So we're glad to see that.
Good deal. Thanks, Ron.
Can you give us an update on the bridge? Did y'all talk about the bridge?
The town bridge, 18%, wasn't it? Derek, 18% complete on schedule.
18%?
18% complete on schedule. As long as, as long as the John goes.
Leaving on the new business, item A, consideration of resolution improving document changes to allow use of bond proceeds for landfill equipment. Finance Director, Mr. Lori Hall.
I'll defer to Chris though.
Welcome, Chris.
Hey, I didn't know you were going to be here.
No, I'll just kind of say that, you know, Chris talked to me a month or two ago and said, you know, hey, there's really some equipment out that I need in relation to this new landfill sale. And I said, no. Yeah, I said, I'm pretty sure, you know, we need to, we'd have to have a modification, you know, to the existing, you know, special obligation documents. So I reached out to Bob Jessup, who was our special counsel on that issue. And what's in your agenda packet is a modification agreement and a resolution prepared by Bob Jessup, which will allow Chris to purchase this equipment with some of the bond proceeds. And I'll let Chris explain kind of his equipment needs to.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I believe, I can't remember in what form, but these items were noted in my budget. Just didn't account for them in my regular budget dollars, anticipating using the bond revenue to purchase these two pieces of equipment. This is not replacement equipment. This is new equipment. Equipment that we, well, that we haven't necessarily needed before. The big-ticket item is an excavator. We've got about seven new sed basins, two of which empty directly into either a stream within 50 feet or wetlands basically touching the sed basin. So we designed these, or I requested these basins be designed so that they could be maintained. They're not ponds. They're more racetracks so that we can reach from either side with a track-o and keep the silk collected and out of where we don't want it, so that we don't get in violation of our MPDES permit. The second item is a mower or mowers, depending on kind of what we go with. We've looked at about five different mowers. One more we're waiting on to see what it's all about. But turns out, we got eight and a half acres of landfill and about 50 acres of steep slopes. Nothing we have will mow that. A lot of the slopes are so steep, I really don't even want the guys on it. And so, looking at various steep slope mowers to try to keep up with the mowing on around cell three, but then once it's closed and capped, also, of course, will help us maintain cell two, cells one and two. Funds exist. I think we're, I think the change, the last change order, wasn't it for a $400,000?
303, 683.
Okay, well, I was thinking big. But anyway, the money is in the bond. It was anticipated spending it this way. I just didn't specifically call out the equipment in listing the using of the funds.
And I've already reached out to the local veteran commission as well as the bank. Both parties are agreeable to allow us to use part of the funds for these purposes.
All right, Chris, I see what you're saying with the silk. You're going to pop it out with the excavator. Do you have your own dump trucks you're going to haul it out with? And then how frequently are you expecting this to happen?
Well, I mean, obviously, a few times a year, depending on, depending on how much rain we get. The, again, since we went with more of a narrow kind of track style, certainly want to keep it maintained more often than the never that we maintain the current ponds.
You think it's better, I'm just asking your, you obviously think it is, but I'm, I can't help but ask. You think it's better to spend that much money on excavating? You think it's better to to spend that much money on an excavator and we operate it and do that several times per year than it is to hire somebody to come in and do it on an hourly, hourly basis?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I mean.
Could you use excavator for that stuff?
Yeah.
Besides that?
I, I hope this is in there, but, but yes, the other, the other, we've always used a loader and a dump truck because if a piece of equipment went down in the landfill, we could always move the loader over and at least kind of place garbage. And it's 100, 200 yards from the working face to the borrow area, so I never really felt the need to have the efficiency of an excavator. But once we kind of, once we cap cell two and are over on cell three exclusively, basically the second portion, and I keep saying phase, but it's phase three. It's cell one of phase three, it used to be cell three of phase one of cell three, anyway, doesn't matter. The next one that we're gonna build, we are going to excavate that soil for for daily cover in what we're using to to help reduce the cost for grading the next time we, we need to do an expansion. And because historically we've had just kind of a wide open spot and we've just kind of cut it out and lifts, the loader worked fine, this is gonna need to be more confined and kind of deep and quick repair, deep and quick repair. So even just our, just our daily cover, once we move over to cell two of phase three and start excavating, it, we're really gonna need the excavator. The loader's not gonna be conducive to to what we need to, how we need to manage that pile.
Yeah, again, I'm just making sure that it's, it's more cost productive to do that on our own versus hiring somebody to come in and do that occasionally on an hourly basis, because you can $150 an hour, it takes a lot to build up to $175,000, so.
True that.
And then on the mowers, that's sort of my business, so. I'm, I'm not familiar with these, I've seen them, but I don't know about the reliability or anything else, so I don't know. Have you seen, is there any other, anyone else use these?
I've, I mean, yeah, I'm, I mean, I'm constantly doing, you know, doing research, looking for more information because it's a fairly new, it's a fairly new technology. This is a machine that we demoed, this is a ride on machine. And here's some of the, there's some of the others. The primary benefit is these mowers are, are, have such a low center of gravity. They don't need to be as heavy, so even that, even the one with the operator, if you're brave enough to do it and it's stable, when you turn, you're still gonna be tearing up the slope. It's just gonna dig in, there's, there's no way around that. So these are a lot lighter, most of them are, most of them are tracked machines. So much less damage to, much less damage to the slope as you're trying to maintain it. The other thing is if one of these flips over, you kick it back over and keep going. That's obviously not the case if we had a man on, on these slopes. And I don't know how many of you have visited the site, but we really have a lot of steep slopes right now.
So how many of these mowers? 400,000?
If, the one that we haven't demoed yet, I would get two. One for, one, one that's larger, that goes up to a 30% grade, and then one that's slightly smaller, that'll do a 70% grade. By contrast, if we don't go with that, if we go with like that ride on, that, that machine's $96,000. So that would just have to carry the day, so.
And how, how often does this mower occur?
Generally, we mow three times a year. But keeping in mind that between showers and having a man to operate, it's probably gonna take, it's probably gonna take two or three weeks just to get from one end to the other.
Have we looked at outsourcing that?
Have not.
Is that a viable option?
I mean, it could be. I wouldn't, I wouldn't discount it as an option. Just, it's, it's just a matter of, once, once we're over there, it, it gets a little trickier. I mean, the places where not is fine, the places where are, it's a little sketchy.
I mean, if, if, if we can, if we can outsource it and the work be done as efficiently for less cost, it seems like that would be a logical thing to look at.
Yeah, and I haven't priced it, but I have thought about it, just, I mean, just the fact that tying one of my guys up for basically the whole summer to make three passes is, is not something. Really, one of these has a GPS, but that technology's not ready yet. But once, once we, kind of this is a step to that where with, with the GPS equipment that we have on our equipment and adding another rover, we could 3D map the landfill and just tell the mower to go out at 2:00 AM and do its business. But we're not there yet.
Seems like it'd be logical to look, look at that.
Do they have one of these mowers?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I don't, I don't know them personally, but I have visited places.
Does that have, does it have a contractor?
Oh, now the contractor, I don't know what he would bring, I mean.
Has insurance, that chef would? We can't find nobody mowing the side of the road, my parking meter has insurance.
Somebody's in that business, I would, I could be adequately sure.
We got them, I just wonder if, if you know anybody, do you know anybody? Roger Westhouse. Here, give Roger a call, we could probably buy 14 of these.
What about this, how many panel excavators is that?
Wow, you've got my sheet, let me, no, I've got those. In the.
Or what, what, what size machine?
320.
Pardon?
A 320, CAT 320.
Okay, so and, and the reason that we're getting a CAT 320 is because we have these narrow places to get in? Narrow evidently is a relative term because you're not gonna put a 320 in something there.
Well, again, the, the, the basins are approximately 30 to 40 feet wide. So with, we've specced these, I, I didn't give you these, but these are the, the specs on the four excavators that we've looked at. It's 18, 18 foot 8 inch boom on each of them. So if we can get half from one side, half from the other, and of course if it's dry weather, we can, we can, we can walk into the edges of the basin, so long as we don't, you know, tear up too much grass and, and get near points of influence and effluent.
So the narrow is in the basin itself, not in the?
It's in the channel. Yes, it's in the channel. And basically, there's a, there's a path wide enough to take a dump truck. This thing makes a big S shape and then you got little islands, not islands, because more peninsulas, I suppose. But, but you can, we can walk anywhere around the pond and access it from both sides of the channel.
A remote controlled mower, does it have to have an operator?
Yes, unfortunately.
Say 2:00 AM or something?
Not, they're, they're working on GPS where these things can program themselves and they'll just go mow till their battery runs dead, come back and charge and go again. But that's not quite there yet.
Where the community did that?
Well, they're electric, so yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't set up outside somebody's window with a, with a gas powered mower.
Do you mow up and down or sideways?
These will do either way, but.
If you mow, if you mow up and down, do you mow down and then back up? You know how the track machine will do when you turn it?
Yeah.
It's all the slow.
Well, with, with the track machines, we've been mowing side to side so that we don't get that rutting to the top and bottom. And like I said, the nice thing is because the center of gravity's so low, they're not nearly as heavy as, as a manned piece of equipment would have to be for stability.
It's got a big head and we had to have it run around that thing.
The, the one, the ones we've demoed are in the 50 to $60,000 range. The one I'm waiting to demo is, is about 30,000. Now, you know, half the price could mean this guy's not trying to kill me, or it could mean he manufactures a real piece, so we'll, we're waiting to find that out.
Yeah, let's see that.
They're, I mean, they're pretty cool. They go places that, you know, you couldn't even start with a mower. You know, some, you know, these steep banks that you weed eat and stuff, I mean, they, they don't mind at all. I think maybe Mr. Sheldon.
I like so. See if they make more for Hell Creek. Take them all 40%.
Do you want them worn today?
Uh, it varies, but that's obviously.
About the hours or about the time?
Hours.
And if it takes, you know.
Well, no, I mean, it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be a year, two years, five years, whatever it is. Or if you hit so many hours, probably given about 1,000 hours a year, maybe, maybe less on a mower, because there's, there's gonna be several months of downtime.
How are you doing now?
We're not.
Another one, keep it clean and manicured, would it be beneficial for stability, the wet shrubs growing?
Well, well, shrubs are a different thing. You cannot have woody vegetation on it. Woody vegetation has a taproot, the taproot can go and create a channel for water to get the garbage. Sounds crazy to me too, but that's, that's the rule. So, yeah, can't have woody vegetation. The problem, we used to mow twice a year, and I mean, I'm talking the C and D landfill, Old Highlands, Old Franklin, cell two, you know, we make our laps around. And what we found was only mowing twice a year, the grass gets so tall that when you mow it, it kills everything under it. So we've had a lot more success moving to, moving to three. And of course, with something like this, that's, that's gonna be easier to get to it three times a year. Because we're not, you know, we're, again, you know, with coming up on five landfills to mow and a lot of, a lot of buffer around the new cell. I mean, like I said, it, it would take us, it'd take us probably all summer to, to get around to everybody twice. These, we can put them on a trailer, drive it up to Highlands, knock it out in a day or two, you know, so. That's the other big thing is the Massey Ferguson, which is aged and down right now fairly extensively. We, I mean, we have mowed the tops and, and places that we feel safe, but the, the slopes are just, are just kind of doing their thing. What I don't want to have is what we have on the existing landfill where our dike is, you know, got old growth forest on it. I mean, it's actually good for stability, but not, not exactly how you're supposed to do it. Plus, nobody sees that slope and everybody's gonna see this slope.
Over to the process, you gotta maintain.
Yeah, and it's, like I said, it's, it's gonna be a lot to maintain. It really is. I didn't, I didn't necessarily anticipate how much steep slope we were gonna have, but, you know, it's, it's trying to work ahead and work it into the design of building future ones in a way that kind of makes sense and holds the edges where you need them as you, as you move through the progression.
It's gonna wait for 50 years.
What's that, the landfill? Well, do you want to talk about HB 56? It may last 300. I just don't know who's gonna pay for it.
You be paying out the dollars.
We're, we're exempted out of that, but it's, I don't, I don't know why they did, I do know why they did it. It has to do with one landfill in one place down east.
One county.
I'm just introducing it, I'm not actually talking about it yet.
What the legislation's all about, economic bad apple?
Well, I mean, they dole down the legislation so much, it's, it's easy to get out of except for one part. And, and it's a ridiculous notion. I spoke to Senator Jackson's office today. We will have to, Lori, when we go to LGC to borrow money for future sales, we will have to do an RFP process to allow private companies to throw in a price for us to ship and tip somewhere else. And we must be cheaper or competitive by whatever measure they decide, which I've preached for years, you can't compare a private and a public landfill. They bury trash. We bury trash and run a transfer station in Highlands and have 11 convenience centers and recycle and have the state mandated money losing recycling of 40,000 a year for e-waste, losing 10,000 a year in scrap tires, abolishment of the White Goods Management Trust Fund. I mean, there's all these things they make us do which costs money.
What they need to do is go and read this bill, because you see what was added on to this bill? What they do, they, they combine all these things of HB 56. This was added on, pop up, go away, pop, go away, pop, go away.
It went through about 10 different bills.
This was added on in PD County against County, I think some of our ladies didn't want to vote for this. But there's other things, now they had to vote for that, that would help us.
Yeah.
And it pity County against County, there was like seven different things added in this bill. If you read this bill, I'm not sure they could. But if you read the whole, we had the whole thing Saturday, from one end to the other, you can't make it up. And so there's, everything was lumped into one bill. And so it pitted a lot of counties that didn't want to vote for HB 56 because it was one county.
Yeah.
They knew that, but it affects the whole state. It's gonna affect us sooner or later.
Sooner or later. I mean, I don't want to be overdramatic, but, you know, I pitched y'all two years ago on building a 60-year landfill, and if this bill had been, if this was law then, I might have had a different story to tell. I mean, it's, it could be impactful down the road.
See, they couldn't even get read the Senate until they added all this other stuff in.
Yeah.
And now they have to, so.
Well, apparently, from what I've learned over the last few years of watching this stuff, you, you let stuff simmer all year, throwing in an omnibus bill on the way out the door, and that's how most stuff gets passed, apparently.
It was vetoed, the governor vetoed it, but they kept adding stuff like the old road. Anyway, so what are you gonna do here, Chris? To the county's best benefit to buy this equipment?
Uh, yes, sir. Like I said, what you're approving tonight is just our ability to, to buy the equipment with those funds. I mean, I'm, I'm, I've, I'm ready to pull the trigger on an excavator.
Who owns the equipment, the county or the, the? Who owns the?
We do.
You're still gonna have to go through the bid process, of a bid process. At this point, there're just, there were strings on how that money could be used that was borrowed. And it could not be used for this purpose without the bank's approval and without the LGC saying it's okay to do it.
But they said we're okay.
And of course, the commissioners need to say it's gonna be okay to use that money in that way as well. But they ultimately, there's still that process of having to put these purchases out for bid and you'll have an opportunity to look at those and either accept them or reject them.
So these are, I mean, the enterprise fund, but ultimately it's county.
Yes, oh yes, it'd be.
The county needs to interpret any word, any time.
Oh God, don't say that out loud. That bill may come back too.
Very to make a call, we need to more mow.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not, you know the bill I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. People trying to abolish enterprise funds because somebody's mowing an airport down east somewhere.
So how quickly do you need that? Is this something?
Basically, right now, it's just, it's just trying to get the, just trying to get this step taken care of so that I can commence with, I mean, I have four processes for excavators that are all in state contract. And so we can go with that, we can bid it if you want, or, you know, whatever. But I would like to try to get the excavator before winter sets in, you know, October, November, somewhere in there. The mowers, ships kind of sailed this year, but we'd certainly like to get a jump on it February, March.
My only thoughts, I mean, to me, the.
My only thoughts, I, I mean, to me, the excavator, you know, there's multiple uses for it, but, I mean, would be too much to ask for you to go back and look and see what it would cost to contract this mowing out?
No, I don't mind doing that at all. Like I said, I, you know, you're not approving me buying anything, just giving me the ability to use.
Yeah, once, once the gate's open, I've found here, once you ever open the gate, then there's no closing.
This is a formal bid, though. The equipment will be a formal bid, it's gonna have to come back to you guys to approve. You can't just go out and buy this without coming back to you.
All this piece is gonna be in excess of that?
No. Well.
The excavator, yes.
The excavator, certainly. The, uh, the mowers potentially not, unless we go with that one that I don't wanna go with.
What's happening, Chief?
It's his place to run that landfill. He knows the laws and the requirements permit from all that, better than we do. I'll say your enlist at this, it's not probable. I mean, it's just, just, it's part of what we're gonna do. You know the motion? I'll make a motion, sure.
Say.
What do we motion? Does Lori need to tell them what their motion is?
I think the motion would be to approve the resolution as presented. It's just, it's starting the process.
Right, right.
Why'd you pick cat?
No, no, no. I just said cat because that was the top one. Well, I'll just tell, if they were low, so.
All right, discussion, further discussion. I personally, Chris, uh, I'm in agreement with this. I think we give you their flexibility as managers to, uh, run this with the best of your abilities. Just because I am in the, a little bit in that industry, I agree with Commissioner Gillespie that I think you ought to investigate that just for sake, 'cause I, I, I know what you're gonna be spending on repairing this stuff with the locusts and the other items and the drainage ditches, the erosion ditches you're gonna be running into. It's gonna be a constant issue. And then the same thing with the excavator, too. If you can use it for every day for other stuff, I think it makes sense. If you, if it's gonna be sitting thirty days and not firing it up, then that makes more sense, and I, I, I know you know that, so. Again, I just think, I just wanna see you, we wanna see you dot your i's and cross your t's and that type of thing, so.
Wouldn't have it any other way.
Good deal. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Four to one, Mr. Decker. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Item eleven B, discussion regarding Southmaken Elementary School.
Mr. Chairman, we, uh, the liaison committee, uh, you've heard, and I think it begins this year, we had talked about, I think it was well aware, that during our discussion with the budget about Southmaken school, and, uh, they were gonna wait and see what the enrollment numbers were for the lower grades and whether they need for an addition. After those numbers come back and they decided, yes, it was the need for an addition, they would like to look for an addition for around ninety-seven hundred square feet along with additional twelve hundred square feet for an addition to the cafeteria. So, uh, we know how long this process takes when we start a school project. So, uh, Mr. Shields and I have, have talked and, uh, talked to Mr. Baldwin, and, uh, what we would like to do is authorize this board to authorize the school board to go ahead and and get quotes from architect, they choose the architect, the school board does, that's just a rule. And, uh, they choose the architect, go ahead and, and get a quote from an architect. But if we start the process now, if everything goes well, we might start construction in the spring, maybe, maybe. We know how long it takes.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna have to put out a request for, proposal for architectural services. One thing we need to, to think about, I think, past projects, if the county's gonna end up undertaking to do the construction, which I suspect it will, uh, those architectural services are gonna need to be able to be transferred to the county.
Just like we've done all of it. And I understand there might be some QZAP money available.
Yes, sir.
So, that's, is that?
QZAP, you can't use it.
Yeah, QZAP's for existing footprint only.
Yeah.
Oh, that's for renovation only.
Right.
Is it QSCAB?
Yes, sir, there are no QSCAB funds that I can find on the internet.
That's for, that's for new. So, anyway, we'd like to have, we need this board's approval to give the school board approval to advertise and get, get some quotes back for architects. That's all we're asking for.
Yeah, I, I think you need to, to let them understand that we're.
Here, we'd just like to all.
The support of the project, you know, it is basic.
They're looking at, uh, we don't know, if you don't know what, what the costs are, but looking back, and you're probably looking around two hundred dollars square foot for the, for the main, probably two hundred dollars square foot for holiday. And then, that, you gotta know that that school is now right top, about twenty or so?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So, you wouldn't think that, but it sure is. And, uh, so, and that school is on a chiller, and you need to remember that. And the problems that, that comes along with that, so, so. And I, I mentioned to Tracy and, and, and Mr. Baldwin and, and to, and our manager, too, that that it's time to probably really have an engineer really look at that thing and make sure that that, everything's working properly with that, with that thing. And if you remember, there were some problems with that, I remember that with Bill, that's the problem with that. But they improvised and did different things, so I don't know if that stands, but I'll talk to Tracy a little bit about it. What I'm asking the board to do, and Mr. Shields can speak to it, and Mr. Manager, you certainly can, is just authorize the school board to advertise for architecture fees. Or FFP for architecture.
Would this board, I always want me to go ahead and speak with Mr. John Henny Jr. about the paperwork that'd be necessary, the, uh, interlocal agreement to get this project.
He got, he shouldn't have a stack about that tall about what we've done over the past ten years.
The bottom line is that process needs to get started pretty quickly.
We're doing this because they're at capacity, exceeding capacity, and I presume that there's no room with the other schools to live in today.
Well, if you, if you know, you know, the farm, others, they've got, they've got children. Yeah, and, and Mr. Teemer, a farm marshal, has done, he's, he's cutting some, I ain't gonna say cutting, but he's letting them, I consider him that eligible to charge them, but it shouldn't mean you question that, I'll just say that.
So, we got a motion from you, in a second.
And Dr. Baldwin is not here tonight, uh, but he's aware of what, he's at a meeting in Nantahala.
I'm familiar, just to stick to one of the few of the school board members, any further discussion or questions on this?
This, I know y'all was the liaisons, and I'm not familiar with it. Is this the preferred option? I mean, are there any other options other than addition? I mean, is Iowa, East Franklin, or any transferring or shifting?
Not for this amount of children. This is six classrooms.
Have any, have any kids, how many children are you needing?
Well, there, there are three classes that are not in classrooms right now. They're in other spaces that Southmaken has adjusted to work as a classroom.
Until it just makes sense, this is such an easy place to put an addition, or if you look at this school, it just makes sense, like everything else we tried to do since we started all these schools. If you wanna do that and build this corridor, if you're gonna come out with this corridor, if you're gonna put three classrooms here, you might go ahead and figure for a little expansion down the road for the next ten, fifteen years. So, put three classrooms on the other side, you can do probably half the amount of square footies now than you can in the future. The same thing on the cafeteria. Both of them are, if you're gonna put an addition on to a school, probably the easiest tenure you'll ever put on, the Southmaken.
What I was getting to though is East Franklin, is it?
It has a, it has a tech capacity, Carte de Jolly is also. Uh, the one that probably has the most space is Iowa. It's the newest, but they're closing in on that. And to move all the districts to alleviate the overcrowding at Southmaken and move it to capacity to Iowa, you're gonna be affecting Carte de Jolly, Southmaken, and East Franklin. To adjust the districts to move that. The students from Southmaken, bump them all to get to Iowa to fill up a classroom or two there. But you're still gonna be at capacity at Southmaken.
And you would, and I think that's right, if they looked at all the numbers, even if they done that, you might not accomplish what you're asking.
Right, that's correct.
I mean, that's just, you know, we sort of build them in anticipation.
What is that, Settick or Sewer out, out of the, uh?
Sewer, Southmaken.
Southmaken, is there sewer?
Yes.
Do you say?
Any further discussion? All in favor, seeing if I'm gonna say an aye?
Aye.
All right, item C, uh, Mr. Decker, vacation?
Yes, sir. Um, the folks at Health and Human Services at the state level are asking DSS some help. County holiday schedules have been approved for twenty eighteen, so what I submitted to you was simply a, um, a schedule for twenty eighteen that follows the state's schedule, been the same way we've had for the past six, seven years. Uh, number of holidays stays at twelve.
Motion to approve? Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You good? You wanna talk about it?
No, no, no.
You good?
I was gonna say, at least if it's storm or something, we'd keep it going.
All right, item D, uh, wastewater treatment at Nantahala?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, have Mr. Gibbs and Mr. Fay here with us tonight. Uh, if, if any of you aren't aware, I think that we can all safely say that, uh, the wastewater treatment facility that is currently being used by the Nantahala school is in need of repair, a complete overhaul, if you will. And Mr. Gibbs has found a way to accomplish this through grant funding, through a CDVG grant. And as he was going through that process, uh, Mr. Fay from the county has been through that process many times. It's what he does there in the Housing Department, and he has worked with Mr. Gibbs to, uh, get this ready to go. And at this time, I'll just ask, uh, Mr. Gibbs to fill us in on, on what's going on, the, the grant, what it's gonna do for Nantahala, and what is gonna be required of this board.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the community, uh, development block grants are federal money. Uh, this, these infrastructure grants, um, are being administered by the state. You can correct me anytime if I don't get this right. He's got a whole lot more experience than I do. Went to a meeting Wednesday night, a couple of months ago, and, uh, the meeting involved, uh, Department of Environmental, Deaner, Environmental Natural Resources, talking about these grants, and in the audience were nothing but educational people because these grants are aimed at infrastructure support, um, for schools and school systems. I was working on it, uh, had some questions on the application itself, um, three weeks ago. Uh, called Julie Kubeta, who's with, uh, Deaner, uh, and she said that really, the counties, uh, this is federal money, and really, this money's awarded to counties and not to school systems. And my thought was, why didn't you tell us that two or three months ago? So then I reached out to Mr. Fay, um, Mr. Rowland, and they've been gracious enough to really help me through it. Uh, but, uh, Mr. Fay has much more experience, um, and he could probably talk about more of the requirements of the board than I could to make this happen.
The, uh, uh, this is not unlike the CDVG, uh, single-family rehabilitation, uh, program. As you recall, probably about four or five years ago, legislature took all that money away and put it into infrastructure. They no longer were there rehabbing houses. So, as a result of that, they went into this wastewater and freshwater, uh, program. And, uh, they have a special section, CDVGI, that is for school systems. And basically, uh, it can be, they can be pretty complicated in, in that, Mr. Gibbs has already done a tremendous amount of work and collected this stuff and really kinda dotted the i's and crossed the t's. But also, he's aware of what happens when dealing with these types of grants. Exactly right, they should, they, you find out about a lot of stuff afterwards, so, uh, I don't wanna sit here and say that it's a smooth road all the way. Uh, so knowing that upfront, uh, the thing that I, that I, going through the application, I see that, uh, the board, and I'm not sure exactly because of the time constraints here, we're talking October thirty-first, the application has to be submitted. In order to do that, first off, that, that the county is really needs to, uh, y'all would need to officially, uh, assign somebody to represent the county. It'd have to be by proclamation. You'd have to, uh, vote on it and say, this particular person, uh, is going to be representing the county on this grant. I, from everything I've read, I don't think it has to be a county person. In other words, you could, uh, from what I can gather, you could select Mr. Gibbs to continue on with the process and go through with it. But that needs, there needs to be, uh, official action taken on that. The other official action that needs to be taken with this grant, um, is gonna be officially adopting the results of the public hearing that's being held. Now, that's kinda hard to do in a public hearing. That's why Dr. Baldwin's not with us this evening. He's in Nantahala conducting the public hearing around this. Um, they, uh, Mr. Gibbs has informed them up there, the, the principal, that, of what the criteria needs to be covered to satisfy this grant application in this public hearing. So, at some point in time, between now and October thirty-first, uh, the board would need to adopt, uh, the minutes of that, uh, hearing that's being conducted. As far as official action, uh, that, that's basically it. Sign somebody, uh, select somebody that you want to complete the application and make application for the county, and then, uh, somewhere between now and, uh, the thirty-first, adopt the minutes of that, the public hearing that's taking place in Nantahala.
So, the, the language you wanna use, John, is to select someone to, to represent the GDVG?
Yes, sir.
Request, is that, is that how you wanna put it, or?
It, uh, what they're, uh, if I can give you this language from here.
What's up with podium, John?
The, uh, it says, is, uh, is authorized representative, he or she has been authorized to file this application by formal action of the government body, governmental body.
Whether he's ever, Todd or the county, or maybe you or Todd, they want to do that.
Actually, according to the way this thing is worded, and from what I've seen, you could have anybody that you wanted to, uh. Well, no, that, that would, that'd probably not be a good idea.
Would it be you, John, that would be, would carry, carry water on it, or?
Well, Todd has done all of the, the technical, and he's aware of the technical aspects. I, I'm aware of the CDVG process. Pardon?
You'd have him though.
Absolutely, yeah.
Remember, this is just for the application for the grant.
This is the application for the grant.
And the grant?
Yes, sir, I will, I will do that.
That's key, the application is everything.
Yeah, it's, 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 it makes a break.
It'd be well known.
That's it, yeah, been through that one.
If he will, I mean, I don't wanna say, I don't wanna say you go do it, and you're not interested, but if you're interested, and that's great, man, that's two hundred.
Two, we, we're applying for two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It's all grant, uh, no match.
And the plant's gotta be replaced. What you're saying is the grant application is not to be made by the school board, but instead the county.
The county is eligible, whereas the school board itself isn't. They are eligible through us.
Is there any security that has to be given, uh, for the grant?
Uh, I, no security. The only thing I've seen is assurances, and, uh, that's it.
What do we need to do about the meeting?
So, can we, can we authorize, uh, Mr. Turner, can we authorize, can we go ahead and approve those minutes, that are about, that, that are taking place tonight, now?
No.
Wow.
Can we, can we vote to let the county manager interpret?
I have a pretty good idea what they are. Nantahala residents, uh, Nantahala residents, the board's through concern over the sewer plant, won't replace it.
Can we authorize the county manager to, to do that?
The problem is, is I've not even seen the grant application. I don't know if anybody. If this is the board has to go down, you better rent the board road down here.
That, what's?
High frequency.
That's, that's exactly right. And one of the things is, is that.
Another thing I'm a little bit concerned about is can, you know, again, I'm not seeing the grant package, but I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that if the entity applying for the grant, is not the one that held the, the public hearing, I'm, I'm a little concerned there.
Another thing I'm a little bit concerned about is can, you know, I, again, I've not seen the grant package, but I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that if the entity applying for the grant, um, is not the one that held the, the public hearing, I'm, I'm a little concerned there. I, you know, it may not be a problem, but typically, the, uh, entity applying for the grant holds the public hearing.
And, and all, uh, from what I've been through, uh, as far as all of the materials that they've made available to us for the application, they don't cover that. But there may be some legal issues as far as the, the actual federal government goes.
And it may not be a problem at all, but I guess what I'm saying is county might wanna take a real quick look at that, because if there is a concern there, it sounds to me like we've got to get, we'd have to have that.
Let's manage on the way to do what we can do tonight and, and, and let the county attorney look at it, and, and then when we get the minutes, can, can we vote on them?
We both vote on them, um, by consensus and then ratify it at the November meeting. If we get a unanimous, can you send out an email poll to vote?
One of the things this with, with.
There's, there's not anything to vote on. There are no minutes to approve.
To accept, to, when they become available.
When they become available.
Can we, can I send them to the board via email, and if?
What, what, what is the requirement of the grant?
Okay, the grant, and as far as what we'll have to have, we're gonna have to have documentation that shows, uh, from, uh, Mr. Decker, that'll show that there was a vote held and that they adopted those minutes from that public hearing.
There's no minutes. Well, they will be minutes.
And does?
I mean, after not having minutes, and so can, can the, well, Derek's asking, can they send those minutes out by email, and that's vote on them?
You, you need to. Before the thirty first.
What, what I am saying to you is, first of all, there needs to be minutes. I don't know what the approval is. I mean, is the approval?
I, I, in my.
What is the approval intended to be?
It, it's, I, they put this in, in red in their, uh, information. And why they say adopted, I don't know, 'cause it sounds like you're saying you agree with what's in there. And, and basically, the way I understand it is, you're not agreeing, you're just saying that, hey, we held a public hearing, and what you've adopted is the framework.
You did hold a public hearing. That's my first concern.
Well, it, 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 let's see, it says a copy of the advertising notice, which Todd has, uh, and the minutes of the public hearing adopted, uh, by, it says member, uh, minutes of the public hearing adopted by the unit of local, general local government. So it's saying, it didn't say where those come from. It says the local government unit adopted those.
And they're having that be denied.
Or you could.
They're having that be denied, sir.
Yes, sir, mhm, right.
What if we, uh?
I, that's what I'm thinking, is what I, I mean, typically, when you're sending in minutes of a public hearing that was required as part of the process, typically, what you are saying is, this is what happened at that meeting. We're certifying that this is what happened at that meeting. We were there, this is what was said. Uh, this is a fair statement, if you will, of what happened at that meeting. There's not anybody in this room that can say that.
Let's, let's do this, if everybody's in agreement with it. I mean, this is two hundred thousand dollars to, to replace this system.
Right.
It's not gonna require a match. I mean, this is a, it's a home run.
Right.
Why don't we let Chester, uh, review that grant application, uh, review the, the public hearing, and, and see if that will, uh, see if that's gonna hold up for this application. And between now and then, if we need to call another meeting before October thirty first to approve those minutes, or if we need to set a public hearing.
Or both.
Uh, before October thirty first, or both, um, then we can do so at that time.
And we have a problem if, if we do have to do another public hearing, we've got to hold the public hearing, um, when we advertise it, you got ten days. And, and that's gotta happen within that time period, if not.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're talking about twenty-one days.
Exactly.
That's why I'm saying something needs to be with that immediately.
Right, right.
So if the board's in agreement, that would be what I would recommend, to move forward on this.
Someone just recessed tonight's meeting, and then we may have to meet back.
Well, we have.
You don't necessarily have to recess. It's what we could call a special meeting, and, uh, we, we can address it in a special meeting if that's necessary.
All right.
Good job. Are you gonna vote on Todd?
I think we do it all at one time.
Let's just do it all. We're gonna have to have a meeting here.
Well, I, why don't we go ahead and nominate?
Do we need to go ahead and inform him?
No, no, no.
Or does it have to be one action? I mean, can we do it? Yeah, and I, I'm assuming the school board would be in favor of that as well?
Yes, sir, I would assume they also.
I'd like that motion.
Motion of the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Todd.
Thank you. Thank you for saying hello, Ms. Todd and John, both of you guys.
I like you for working together. I think that's a great, John, thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank both of you for making.
I mean, you know the lick it's done by.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We've, we've done this rodeo before.
You, you've done that, we've done that wrong, Todd, too. You know the lick it's done by.
All right, we get a motion to approve the consent.
Who has that grant package?
John, who's got the grant package?
Um, actually, uh, Todd has the, uh, the whole package. I've got it in, basically, the blanks.
Can we get that digital?
All right.
Yeah. Yeah, I, that'd be great, and we'll get to work on it. Thank you.
Get it to me and I'll get it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Take a motion to approve the consent agenda unless somebody likes something removed.
So moved.
Motion to approve in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Appointments, uh, Community Funding Pool?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd just like to take a, a second to give an update on where we're at in that process. The Community Funding Pool, as we, you know, you, we've made mention a couple of times of, of getting that, uh, committee, kind of bringing, bringing some organization back, looking to what, um, what was kind of going on and where we went ahead in the future. And in doing that, we look back, and the first thing we attempted to do was find the governing documents of the Community Funding Pool. And come to find out that there is no formal set of governing documents. There is excerpts from minutes that begin back in two thousand of the process of, of appointment for the Community Funding Pool. And essentially, what that said, in two thousand, there were to be four members from the community that represented the community at large. There were to be another four members that represented nonprofits. And there were four members specifically designated to represent the Macon Program for Progress, the Peggy Crosby Center, and the Macon County Community Foundation, and the Volunteer Council, the, the Franklin Volunteer Council. Well, in doing a little more research, we found out that the Franklin Volunteer Council no longer exists. And to, as, as we were looking back through our, uh, through the documentation we have for the Community Funding Pool, we found that it, it had eight members. Eight members is what we had on there. Again, there was that twelve-member requirement that I just specified. Furthermore, we found that, that the members that were on here, some had moved away, and all of the terms of the members had expired. So I made contact with each one of the, the Community Funding Pool members, or someone that knew, hey, this person had moved, I spoke with this person a while back, they're, they're not willing to continue, they're having, uh, issues, whatever they might be. But in speaking with that and trying to nail this down, was able to, uh, speak with Ms. Karen Wallace, who has submitted an application to the Community Funding Pool to continue, um, her service there. Bobby Cantino, uh, who also has submitted an application, and Jennifer Jones, uh, who has submitted her application as well to continue service on the Community Funding Pool. In addition to that, I, I kind of went out and, and, uh, talked with some folks from nonprofits, tried to solicit some applications. And what I have now is a, a commitment from the, the three representatives for the Community Foundation, the Program for Progress, and the Peggy Crosby Center have received a commitment, but no application at this time. Have received applications for four community members, and have received applications for four nonprofit members. So with that being said, uh, again, the, the Volunteer Council of Franklin no longer exists. What I would recommend, we do have these applications, uh, that I just mentioned, we are waiting on some more applications. But, and while we are waiting on that, uh, in an attempt to kind of, uh, formalize, if you will, the, the actions of that committee and have something that spells out, um, the committees that are to be represented, uh, the, the terms of appointment, and the process that goes through for reappointment. Just kind of clean it up and, and get everything in order, uh, through a formal set of governing documents. I've spoken with Chester, he would be willing to do that. And, and at the end of the day, we hope to come to you in November, at the November Board Meeting, with twelve applications that satisfy the requirements of, of what is there now. We're thinking that we will eliminate the Volunteer Council of Franklin, since it no longer exists, and make that slot a community member slot. Uh, if we do, there's an application that's turned in right now that would satisfy that requirement. So in, in, in doing this, uh, if Chester and I could work to, to get these governing documents established and get that ready to go, then we hope to come to you in November with the applications, the, uh, formalized governing documents for this board. And be able to proceed with the press release for applications for the nonprofits that will apply to the Community Funding Pool. Hope to get those, uh, out immediately, look to get those back in February, and potentially, uh, the board could be looking at approval in March or April. Uh, and that is not a, that is not a timeframe that, that has not been, uh, we've had that same timeframe in the past. And so it's not, it, it's, it is urgent, but we're not behind the gun. Uh, we're, we're, we'll work forward, get this thing cleaned up, have it ready to go, and be able to move forward with a, uh, with a formalized process for, for how we do business on this board.
These documents you and Chester are gonna grant, the founding documents that outline.
Yes, just basically memorialize some of the, some of the, uh, the pieces that have been discussed and approved by boards in, in minutes throughout the years, that we had to go back and, and look through the minutes to find. Kind of get that all together in one place, so that we can go to one document and see what members are represented on, on this funding pool, see what the term limits are, and, and so on and so forth.
Yeah, I think it'd be likely nothing more than a resolution that would, uh, essentially identify the organization as an advisory board, and what their, that provide, what their responsibilities would be, and, um, and how long it would be appointed.
But no guidelines or applications from nonprofits or a process of awarding?
Have as many of that, of those things as you want in that resolution. And I think if any of you commissioners have some thoughts about that, we encourage you to provide those to Derek, and those could certainly be top of, uh, conversation for potential inclusion in that resolution.
Yeah, you got to put, thank you for putting that together.
Yeah, just wanted to bring you up to, we have got, like I say, we've received nine applications and commitment for three more, so, uh, we're, we've got this thing in the red zone, we're just gonna take it on in, in November.
Thank you, sir.
It's good, Dan.
All right, uh, moving on to the Economic Development Commission. Looks like we have four appointments. All of them look like reappointments to me. Uh, we have Lieutenant Franklin, uh, their recommendation of Barbara McCray. Should we do each one of these individually, I guess, Chester?
Motion to approve, Ms. McCray.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, second one's from the Highland Area Chamber of Commerce, uh, for Bill Futral.
Motion to approve, Bill.
Motion in the second, Commissioner Higginson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Franklin Area Chamber of Commerce, uh, for Jim Breedlove.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, uh, the third one is, I believe, an at-large member, is a reappointment for Brett Murphy.
Motion to approve, Mr. Murphy.
Second.
Got a motion in the second from Commissioner Shields, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any reason for a closed session, Mr. Commissioner?
No, sir.
So we are gonna adjourn at recess.
I, I think all of especially the, the.
Have a motion to adjourn in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Enjoy it, gentlemen. Good quick meeting tonight. Just got back.